Hi, media team folks. Would you be, um, could you please promote Peter Welch from, oh, JK, we got it figured out. Thank you very much. Hi, Alda Pritchett. We just see an orange square. I think maybe you might need to slide the little dealie on your computer over so your camera's open, but.
If everyone could take their seats so that we could get started, that would be super helpful. Or at least stop your side conversations. Oh, I've got my gavel. I found it. Okay. Today is July 1st, 2025. I will call to order the Madison Common Council Executive Committee meeting. Staff, please call the roll. That's so much fun.
President Vidiver?
Here.
President Vidiver is here. Vice President Govindarajan? Vice President Govindarajan is here. Aldo Yuguer? Aldo Yuguer is here. Alder Madison? Alder Madison is here. Alder Matthews? Alder Matthews is here. Alder Lankella? Alder Lankella is here. Alder Tischler? Alder Tischler is here. Alder Figueroa Cole? Alder Figueroa Cole is here. You have quorum.
Thank you. Vice President Govindarajan, a motion, oh, next on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from the 6:25 Common Council Executive Committee meeting. Alder, or Vice President Govindarajan, a motion on the minutes. Thank you. Any discussion?
Wait, who seconded that?
Figueroa Cole? Oh, she can't. Right, sorry. Somebody else needs a second. She's ex officio. Thank you. All right, is there discussion? Any objections to recording unanimous vote? Seeing no objections, we'll record a unanimous vote to approve the minutes from 6:25. Next on the agenda is public comment. Do we have any registrant speakers?
Just to note that we have Peter Welch available to answer questions, and that is all. On number two.
Awesome. We will move on to disclosures or recusals. Members of the body should make any required disclosures or recusals under the city's ethics code. Are there any disclosures or recusals? Seeing no hands, let's move on to the items in the agenda. I have to actually look at the agenda. So, the first item is the state lobbying update by the Welch Group.
Okay, perfect. Well, hi, everybody. Good afternoon. It's good to see everybody. Just wanted to give everybody an update on what's going on at the state Capitol across the street, or down the road, or however you want to say it. So, it's been a fascinating budget process, unlike any that I've seen in the last 15 years. Obviously, with divided government, it's looking different, especially with the smaller majorities in both houses. And Governor Evers, this budget process is, as you may have been following along, started out fairly normally with the governor introducing his budget, joint finance taking it, starting their work on it, and then all of a sudden, there was negotiations between Governor Evers and legislative Republicans to try to come to a deal. There was a deal come to a few weeks ago that fell apart within hours of it becoming public. So then they went back, started the joint finance process again, and then just in the last few days, there's been a flurry of activity between Republicans and Democrats in the legislature, along with Governor Evers, to try to come to some deal that could survive both the joint finance process and get the votes in both houses of the legislature. I think it became clear to us a few weeks ago that the Senate was going to struggle to pass the budget using only Republican votes. So, unlike earlier this year when we were talking about some of our priorities, municipal services payment was right at the top of that list. There wasn't a whole lot of hope for it at that point, but as we moved forward and as we started to see some cracks and started to see some opportunities, we went full-fledged into making the case for that increase in the municipal services payment. As I said a few minutes ago, lobbying is not a science, it's an art, and you really have to be nimble and really have to know everything that's going on inside the building in order to find out where those opportunities are. So really, that's what developed over the last few days. It became clear that Republicans in the Senate were probably going to need Democratic votes to pass the budget. That gave our team, you know, the Welch Group along with the city, the opportunity to engage with folks, and I have to say Senator Heselbein, Senator Roy's, and others were extremely helpful in this effort. So, we really worked over the last few days to make sure that that was really at the top of their list when it came to negotiations. So, we found out this morning that that was, the municipal services payment was boosted as part of the deal. It was 14 million over the biennium, so 7 million each year over the course of the biennium. So, really good win for the city, not only the city of Madison, but other cities throughout the state that have been interested in this. So, that cleared, that deal was announced by Governor Evers this morning. Joint Finance came in today to finish their work. It was an unusual last day because they had, typically when joint finance is working on the budget, they'll work on individual pieces, individual agencies, and then once they close that, they very rarely go back and revisit it. This is a case where a lot of stuff was revisited because of the deal that they made with Governor Evers and legislative Democrats. So today's motion was 60 pages, and it encompassed UW, transportation, healthcare, childcare, compensation for state employees, and then a bunch of miscellaneous items that included the municipal services payment. So, I think we owe a debt of gratitude, not only to Governor Evers and Senator Heselbein and Senator Roy's, but quite frankly, to the other side of the aisle for actually agreeing to it. This is what building coalitions is really all about. You know, so we spent a lot of time talking to legislative Republicans about the need for this. It was helpful to have the city of Waukesha out in front as well, so we kind of had a bipartisan coalition asking for this. And quite frankly, it helped because it wasn't, in the grand scheme of things, $14 million, kind of a rounding error in the state budget, but it was important to build that support from Republicans and Democrats going into this process to make sure that if and when we had the opportunity, that it wasn't going to be something that one side or the other was completely against. So, thankfully, we got there, got passed by joint finance this afternoon. We still have one more small hurdle to cross, and that's votes in both chambers this week, but I would expect that the deal will stick. They'll get enough votes in both the Assembly and the Senate to pass it, and then it'll be on to the governor for his signature probably some, at some point within the next week or so. So, really good news on that standpoint. Just a couple of things I'll highlight, because I know people across the state care about these, so I'm assuming you guys would as well. Part of the deal is childcare funding, so they invest over $330 million in funding for childcare in the state. Public schools get a boost in their special ed payment. So they, right now, they're reimbursed at about 28% or 29% of what it actually costs them to service special ed needs in their schools. This proposal or this agreement brings it to 42% in the first year and 45% in the second year. It's the highest reimbursement rate that the state has seen in over 30 years. So it's a big win for public schools. The downside is they get their 325 a year for the biennium, but that will be, that is not bought down by the state in this budget, so that will result in property tax increases. So something you folks might hear of going forward. UW system, obviously, I know is important to the city of Madison. There were some talks early on that in order to gain some votes of some lawmakers, that there would actually have to be cuts to the UW system. Thankfully, that didn't happen. The deal increases funding for the system by over 256 million over the next two years. Short of the 585 they were asking for, but still a significant increase in funding for UW system. And then there's just a couple other things. They're eliminating the sales tax on utility bills to help with energy costs. They're eliminating some income taxes for retirees that are 67 years or older. That only applies to those that, single filers that are making $24,000 or less, or $48,000 for married joint filers. There's also 10 million in, this was very last minute, something the Welch Group was working on. With all the uncertainty around SNAP benefits at the federal level, we were pushing for 10 million in one-time funding to continue the food security initiative grant program, so that's now got a permanent line item in the budget. So, that's a big win for folks that are feeling some food insecurity. So from here, like I said, the state legislature will vote on the budget, it'll go to the governor, and then these guys will take a well-earned break for July and August, come back in September and continue, hopefully continue their work through the end of the session. We continue to work on housing-related issues for the city, trying to move the needle on that. There is a bill currently stuck in the Senate having to do with Weta loan programs. There was over 500 million invested in that program in the last budget. Very little of that money has been utilized by developers because of the restrictions on it, so lawmakers kind of went to work early this year, came up with a bill that would help get that money out the door. It allows stacking of incentives, so they can actually, it makes it worthwhile for them to apply for these, for this loan program. Unfortunately, there's a couple of members in the Senate that are still opposed, so we're continuing our work to try to, try to get them over the finish line and try to get that bill passed. Then there's a bigger bill that Representative Brooks has been working on, right alongside some legislative Dems. Kind of the highlight, I don't, we don't know yet if that's going to come out as one big omnibus package, or if it's going to be individual bills, but some of the things that they're looking at, including in that bill, is development by right, ancillary dwelling units, which I believe was Roy's bill that she put out, dealing with plat approval, TIF and TID reform, and then finally, which this piece I think will be a separate piece, is a bill to deal with the Copley appellate court case. I don't know, have you guys talked much about this? Okay, so real briefly, basically, this court, this appellate court decision said that if you're a landlord and you use, if any provision in your lease is illegal, I'm not an attorney, I'll say that out front, so I'm summarizing, but if there's any provision in your lease that is illegal and somebody sues over it, they can, and the judgment is in their favor, they can then go back and get all the rent that they've paid since the beginning of their term because that one provision in the lease. That's a serious problem, and it doesn't only allow that person, but then if that person is successful, everybody else gets to recover, which, as you can imagine, for landlords throughout the state, especially mom and pops that probably go to Home Depot, or not Home Depot, but Office Max, to pick up kind of your standard lease forms, if there's anything in there that is outdated or illegal, it would probably put them out of business the next day, and it would result in less housing, not more, for people. So, that's another piece that's going to be coming forward. Timing's a little bit uncertain, kind of all the oxygen in the room has been taken up by this state budget process, so I'd expect over the course of the next couple months, there will be continued meetings. Representative Brooks has been bringing in, he's been doing a really good job of bringing in people from all circles of this, whether it's the league, us, towns, developers, builders, realtors, everybody's been in the room. So as you can imagine, whenever you're crafting a piece of legislation, if you want to do it right, you bring everybody together. You try to find common ground, get to an agreement, and then push the bill out. Unfortunately, lawmakers often don't do that work, and then they put a bill out, and then all these people come in and say how much they hate it. It's always better to get that input ahead of time and try to get to some kind of agreement before the bill comes out. So, although it's taking a little bit longer than we'd like to get to a point where this bill is out and circulating, it's because they're really working hard to try to get everybody on board before it does come out. So that's, that's kind of the look forward. The legislature will be, like I said, will be out July and August, they'll come back sometime mid-September, work through mid-November-ish, they'll break again until the first of the year, then they'll come back first week of January or so, and then continue on through probably the end of March. Then they'll gavel out, and you know, and the whole campaign and election season unfortunately starts again. Seems like we never get away from campaigns and elections in this state, but at least for the next couple of months, we won't have to worry about that. So, that's kind of where we're at now. Happy to answer any questions you guys might have, but we feel pretty comfortable that, at least on the municipal services payment, it's in there, joint finance passed it. We should be in good shape tomorrow and going forward, but there's always a caveat that it's never done until it's done. So, we will, we will pop bottles, the corks on the bottles of champagne after both houses vote, and it's on its way to the governor, because we can, we can rest assured that at least, at least our issue, our big issue in this budget, the governor's not going to line item veto out, so we feel pretty good about that.
Alder Tischler.
Oh, thank you. Thank you for coming today and giving us that briefing. And actually, some of the things you said really resonated very strongly with me, you know, finding common ground and getting out ahead of time when bills are getting together. And I guess my question to you is, you know, when, when you and your company, just, you know, when you register in favor of a bill, how do you, you know, do you consult with the mayor's office beforehand to come to that decision, or do you notify him after you registered? I mean, on the ground and?
No, we don't do anything without, without the city saying, telling us to do it. So, basically, what, how it works is as bills get, start circulating for cosponsorship, anything that has a relation to the city, we send along so they can advise us whether it's something they want to track. You know, so there's kind of different categories that they go into. Some bills, it's like, yeah, we're kind of interested in that, we just kind of want to follow it. And there's other bills, it's like, hey, we really like this bill, let's register for it. And there's other bills we don't really like that we want to register against. And then it all depends on how high it is on the list, you know, what we do with that. Like if it's, if it's something that the city supports, we'll go around and talk to, you know, especially folks on the relevant committees that the bill is going to about the fact that we support it, same thing if we're against it. If it's just something we're following, we don't really engage unless the city directs us to.
Okay. If I could just, quick, quick follow-up as well, because the, because I appreciate getting, from council, council leadership, getting the two-page handout, kind of the priorities, but I guess, you know, I guess, and I said before, I appreciate coming here and giving us a briefing, because it's having this nice and concise, but when you came to us a while ago, you were going to give us more monthly updates and reports, and maybe I, we get a lot of emails, a lot of stuff, maybe I'm missing it, but is that something you're, you have been doing, I've just missed it, or are you going to be continuing to provide the Common Council more, more kind of concise reports like that, that apply towards, towards the values that we have as a city?
Sure, yeah. I mean, we would be happy to compile kind of a monthly update on, on what's going on within the legislature in, in kind of broader strokes, if you want, you know, obviously not getting into strategy and things like that, but that's something we'd be happy to do.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Yep.
Oh, I was just going to say, everyone is welcome to subscribe to the Welch Group update, which does tend to give a fairly general overview.
I subscribe to that. I was thinking more tailored to the city.
Yeah, go ahead, Sam.
Yeah, no, that was, thank you. That was one thing I was going to say. The other is that it took us a minute to, I mean, there wasn't, there were no bills to track initially, and then once they started up, oh, sorry, for the sake of those online, let me say that again, subscribing to the Welch Group newsletter is a good way to get sort of top lines. We also have now developed a sort of legislative tracker template, which is the document that Alda Govindarajan shared around, and those will be coming every couple weeks to a month, basically. We can figure out the periodicity, but at least monthly, and we'll show, you know, have a pretty good summary of the legislative issues that we're tracking. And I think that's kind of what, that's at least what I had envisioned as in terms of the monthly, so quarterly, you know, come in in person and answer questions, and then monthly sort of updates on what, what we're tracking, and what we're, what positions we're taking and so on in the legislature. I don't know if there's other pieces of that that would be helpful. We can certainly talk about, you know, happy to, I think, happy to work with the Welch Group to tailor what, the information to what the council is most interested in, in terms of those monthly updates.
Yeah, yeah, we're, we're happy to do that, and, you know, we do it for folks already. The only caveat there is that there are slower times where there's just not a lot, so there, it might be infrequent at times. I mean, we could, we can do it monthly, but, you know, if there's nothing to report, we'll let you know that.
Alder Tischler, did you have a follow-up or, okay, sorry.
Because my understanding is the Common Council, you know, executive committee is given the task of setting the legislative agenda, and I guess maybe it's to... given the task of setting the legislative agenda, and I guess, maybe it's to, to Sam, and I guess, how much is, I mean, leadership, I guess I'm directing it to both behind me, and, you know, how much involvement have you been with, with kind of helping to set the legislative agenda with, with the lobbying group? I guess I'm just, I'm not sure who I'm, because in your, in your presentation, I mean, you, you addressed a number of the ones that has been successful with, with housing, I mean, housing still on there, with childcare options and supports, and for, you know, for the municipal services program, things like that, so, you know, but I'm just wondering, just in general, I mean, the list that we have here, how, how has, how is the mayor's office, and how is the council leadership involved with crafting this?
Yeah, I can, I can let them answer that, but I will tell you that, one of the things as a, as a former lawmaker, I can tell you, is everybody, almost everybody that has a lobbyist, has multiple issues that they're interested in, right? Multiple priorities. When you visit legislative offices, and when you're talking to them on behalf of a client, the last thing you want to do is come in with, with three or four pages of, you know, a dozen or two dozen priorities. Because when you go into a legislative office and you say, hey, here's my 15 priorities, they go, well, you don't really have any. If you got 15, you really don't have any. So, the strategy typically is to try to narrow that down, at least for a leave behind, where it's easy to read, it hits the main talking points, you get to the top, you know, two or three or four priorities, and then the rest of them, they don't go away, but it's just not something you put on that leave behind, because it gets, anything, anything that gets too wordy typically doesn't get read. So we want to make sure that it's impactful, something easy to read, something concise that we can get into their hands, that they can digest, and then we, you know, all those other issues that don't make the top three or so, you know, we can follow up with them on, and work with them on separately, but that's typically how it goes. As far as setting the priorities, that's, that's more a question for the mayor's staff.
Yeah, so, let's see, well, I'll try to answer that. I don't know, not sure what piece you're referring to in terms of the CCEC setting the legislative agenda. I think in the contract and the resolution, bringing on the Welsh Group, it says they'll provide regular updates to the CCEC and consolidate them, which is, I think, part of what we're doing here. In terms of input, if you recall, I think we emailed Alders a couple times, and brought it up at, I think, at common council and with council leadership, noting that we were going to be putting, develop, you know, putting a lot of ideas into the hopper to develop our legislative agenda. We got a few responses from Alders, but not very many. We re-upped that again at the beginning of this year and got, got input, all of which went into formulating the full legislative agenda. I should note that the two-page that you guys got is kind of our top-line leave behind, and is intended for, you know, to be shared with the public and legislators on both sides. We have a longer document that I've also, I think, shared with council leadership, and is still, it's still, it's internal and isn't for public dissemination, but could certainly send that, which has everything, pretty much, that, all the ideas that the Alders sent us that actually were, that are, that are susceptible of being added to a state-level agenda. Because some, some of the things both said were federal or local policy or whatever, but, so, but we could talk about having a more formalized, or sort of, you know, front-loaded way of soliciting council input on legislative agenda, if that would be of interest.
Attorney House also wanted to add something.
Alder Tischler referred to CCEC's role in developing legislative agendas, so I just wanted to note that 33.13, which outlines CCEC's responsibilities, it does mention several items or roles related to legislation, but essentially, it talks about CCEC making recommendations to the council and the mayor regarding legislative priorities. Obviously, the city's had a lobbyist for a long time before this, and they've always worked through the mayor's office and the executive branch in taking, you know, any ideas from the council. So the ordinance does contemplate some role for CCEC, but in the end, it looks like, you know, that is making recommendations to either the mayor or the council as a whole in legislative priorities. And, you know, as we've heard, I mean, things, things can move quickly in the Capitol, they can move slowly, and it's not really practical to come back to the council on a weekly basis to figure out what the priority is at any given time.
I understand, that, that's the art piece that you talked about.
It is, yeah.
Yes, I understand.
It definitely is, and it's one of the things that we talked about early on, too, is speaking with a unified voice, it is so critical to getting things done. I just take, so I represent the School Administrators Alliance, so the public schools, and similar challenges over the years, that they would come in with, you know, a dozen or 15 items that were, were kind of top of line, and very often, that they didn't get much of that done. This year, they were all speaking with one voice, saying, we need special ed reimbursement at, they wanted it at 60, they got it at 45, big win for them, still even at 45, but that unified messaging was critical to getting people engaged at the, at the state level. Because if you have 12 different things, they can't remember any of them. If you have two or three, they'll be able to remember those.
I'll just, I can recall being at the state elections agency, where we had a legislative agenda of about 120.
Yeah.
I don't think we were that successful.
All right.
He actually had a lobbyist.
Alder Yager.
Thank you, Council President. Quick question, in talking about the components of that potentially omnibus bill, you had mentioned that there was some work being done on development by right. Could you just flesh that out a little bit as to what might be in that piece?
So, one of the, one of the pieces that they're trying to get to is, and I don't know that it happens everywhere, and I don't know that it happens in the city of Madison at all, but when you speak to developers, one of the things that is time-consuming and expensive, and ultimately a waste of time, is when they look at the comprehensive plan, and they see, and this has happened in a few communities I won't name in a public forum, but when they have a comprehensive plan that says, okay, in this particular area of our city, you can develop 7,000-square-foot lots. So developer goes through a lot of time and process to come up with a plan to develop 7,000-square-foot lots. Then they go to the community and say, here, we've got a plan to develop exactly what you wanted in your comprehensive plan, and they go, sorry, you can't do that. Because the answer is, our ordinances don't match our comprehensive plan. Our ordinances don't allow for 7,000-square-foot lots. So there is a kind of a remedy for that, the developer then can sue, because the comp plan is supposed to be consistent with your ordinances, but no developer is going to go through the time and the cost of suing, they're just going to walk away. So, one of the things being considered is putting some teeth into that process, so that if you have it in your comp plan, your ordinances have to match, and not having this long process of having to go through lawsuits to be able to get, force the community to do that.
So this is a follow-on question. So this kind of is an expansion of the work that was done in the clarification some years ago about requiring, for instance, that the elements in a conditional use permit, or in the rezoning or so forth, have to have a basis in the comprehensive plan. And as I recall, there was some clarification a couple of years ago, but this is apparently taking it a step further.
Because as, as you know, that, a million years ago, when I was on the county board, we went through that, I think it was the first comp plan that Outagame had ever had, right? That process is long, and it's detailed, and it has a ton of opportunities for public input. And I think developers will, will tell you, and realtors and everybody else will say, that is the place where people should come in, have their voice heard. Once the comp plan is in place, a few neighbors upset that, you know, there's going to be that kind of development next door to me, they shouldn't be able to stop it after it's gone through that whole process. So, yeah, it's, it's trying to marry those two.
Thank you, I have some sympathy for that situation.
Yep.
No further questions.
Alder O'Brien.
Hi, thank you, and I am very grateful for your work. I've spent quite a bit of time in and around the Capitol. So I have a, just a few questions. One of them is, so I noticed that, I believe we entered into contract with you in March, March 25th, budget negotiations begin, with the state begin far earlier than 3/25. Do you think it would have been prudent for us to have somebody who was lobbying or a contract with you prior to that, to get a, you know, to have more runway there for lobbying?
Unsurprisingly, I would, I would recommend having a contract lobbyist all the time.
Okay.
Because, I mean, not only, not only for our own, our own benefit as a business, but honestly, as, as a community is, because you're right, you know, those, those budget conversations, they start, like, for 2020, for the next budget cycle, they'll start next fall.
Yeah.
Or not this coming fall, but fall of 2026. So there's a lot of work done leading up to that. The governor introducing his budget typically in February, so it's always better to be in the door early versus late. This worked out for us because it's a peculiar budget process, and there just happened to be an opening where we could get in. Typically, you want to be engaged much earlier.
Okay. And then I was, you know, going through, and I know that lobbying activity reports are due starting today, I believe, and I noticed that you haven't filed that yet. I, you know, completely get that, completely get that.
We have until the end of the month.
Yeah. When, when will you be providing us with the information and the amount of time and allocation spent on the activity that you have done?
Yeah, I would say probably by the third week of July. So they're due July 31st, and as we go through all of our clients, we'll get it to as quickly as we can.
Okay. And then a clarification on an answer that you gave to Alder Tischler. When you say that you are bringing things to the city for approval, who are you bringing it to? The city's a, the city's a big entity, mayor's office, common council, you know, I'd just be kind of curious, it's Sam? Okay.
Mayor's office.
Yeah, mayor's office, okay.
Okay, Alder Madison.
I haven't raised my hand.
Okay, then great.
It's not even green.
Okay, then we're going to go to Alder Field.
Thank you, Chair, and I want to thank the team for bringing all of this for us. This is a great update, and I appreciate the information. I wanted to ask about another municipal provision in the budget motion that was voted on today. County municipal aid and supplemental county and municipal aid appears to see a 7.3% reduction in '26, '27. And so I'm wondering if that makes for a net neutral effect on municipalities that are benefit from both the municipal services reimbursement and county municipal aid. It looks like the motion that I'm at, the part of the motion that I'm asking about results in a reduction in the transfer to the local government fund of 7.3 million. Maybe that's a better question for Sam, actually, now that I think about it, the impact on the city budget.
So I'm happy to, to respond by saying, I don't know if, I certainly have not had a chance to go through the actual text of the omnibus motion. I don't know that anyone really has parsed it yet. I'm impressed that you went into the fine print already. It's going to take a couple days, I think, for us to go through and figure out the total implications. I would say, just based on, on the summaries in places like WIS Politics and Wheel Report and in the press, it has not been reported in that way. The 14 million has been reported, or the 7 million annually has been reported as an absolute increase in aids, and the, the shared revenue formula does bounce up and down based on, you know, factors having to do with the economy and receipts and so on, so it's possible, again, I, without looking at it, I'm not even sure exactly what line you're talking about, but it's quite possible that that could just be having to do with, with factors in how the municipal aids are calculated, that isn't actually really, not going to result in reduction in Madison at any rate, and, you know, may, may come out in other ways. I just won't know without looking at it, and possibly having the finance department and Dave Schmidiki look at it as well. That's usually, get the final answer on this.
Yeah, one of the, one of the challenges you have, Alder, is, you know, this budget motion came out this afternoon, and it's not statutory language, it's just motion, so as we go forward, we'll get statutory language, we'll get more detail, and then we'll be able to better answer your question. But I appreciate you flagging that.
Yep, appreciate it. It's the provision immediately before municipal service reimbursement. Thanks, everyone.
Alder Evers.
Thanks, Chair. Question real quick, in reading the news release and the report and the paper about what happened, and the legislature regarding the, and what you talked about with the municipal services payment program, do we have an estimate as to what portion of, I think it's 14 million increase would be coming to Madison?
Sam's got you.
Yep, it's approximately 3 million. I can look up the exact figure, but it's, sorry, so that 14 million is, is over the biennium, is over two years, so it's 7 million annually across the state, and of that, Madison will get approximately 3.1 million per annum, so.
For two, okay.
How much is that still short of what we should be getting?
So that brings our, that brings, and it's the same figure for everybody across the state, it was somewhat less than 38%, it was about 37.6% of the calculated cost of providing police and fire, which in itself is a bit of an undercount, I would say, but it brings it up to slightly over 50%. So, we will now be getting about 51% of the value of the services we provide, which basically takes it back to the percentage, this is going to, I'm going to make this more confusing, but anyway, roughly takes us back to where we were in 2011, which is when it was frozen under the first Walker administration, so it essentially accounts for, more or less, all the inflation that has happened since 2011. Notably, then, this is the first time the amount's been increased in, I think, like 25 years, something like that. The actual absolute amount has not gone up, it had gone down previously, so it's, it's a fairly big deal that they increased it. I mean, it's been almost three decades since, since they added any money to this.
Well, and it helps us in the future, too, because it's, it's something we can build off of, to try to get that percentage higher.
Yeah, it's a good target for the next session. Thank you.
Alder Vindarajan.
Thank you. So as some of you know, I work in the Capitol, I usually get to come here relieved that I don't have to talk about the state budget, but that is not the case today. Thanks, Jim, for coming down here. I have a couple questions. I guess a simpler question is, the leave behinds that you were talking about, is that, Sam, maybe the one that I shared with Alders, is that what you guys have been sharing with legislators, or is that different?
It is. I mean, we have, it's, we have not disseminated it widely even to legislators, but it is, that's the purpose it's intended for, and we have shared it with, with some legislators.
Okay, great. And then, Jim, do you know, with the, the gas tax for transportation aids, I know that's stuff that typically helps local communities quite a lot, do you know if we're expecting anything about that in the budget?
What was it again?
The gas tax for transportation aids.
Um, yeah, you know, there were, there was a whole host of transportation items that were part of this omnibus motion that I just haven't had a chance to go through yet, but I'll, I'll do some work.
It's, the details actually were left, actually, I don't know, maybe they're in there, but they were left blank in the agreement with the governor, so it was unclear where that was going to go and where it was going to come from, so. So.
I think I've got something in here. I don't know. I'll see if I can find it.
Okay, thank you. And then I guess one, a couple of other questions I have. With the budget probably being a done deal this week or probably maybe next week.
Knock on wood.
Knock on wood.
Thank you.
What, we still have you on contract for another couple of months and hopefully we renew that afterwards. What other future opportunities do you think that we as the City of Madison can explore and work with you on now that the budget is going to be over in the next couple of weeks?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think we continue to work on, I mean, we're, we're happy to work at, on anything that you guys direct us to do. You know, the housing issue has been a big one, right? So that's going to take up quite a bit of time over the next few months. You know, and then the real unknown is what the legislature does from the time they pass the budget till the end of session. I'm still hopeful that they continue on with normal business, you know, for the remainder of session and stay in session till the end of March or so. And a February probably for the Assembly and March for the Senate. But that's still an unknown and we just don't know kind of the volume that they're going to be going through. But if, if we have things that are kind of longer term that we're working on, introducing those things or starting to have conversations about those things even this year and into early next year, even if we're just trying to set the groundwork for the next legislative session is incredibly important. Because the more, it, it's amazing how long, like Sam said, municipal services hasn't been raised in over 20 years. Special ed funding hasn't gone up in 30, you know, it's, it's been pretty flat. Those things take a long time to get the groundswell of support from both sides out. And that's something we started to see this year, both on special ed funding and on the municipal services payment, where, you know, you talk to enough people and you start to make some inroads regardless of party.
Great.
So, yeah, if you, if you got longer term things that you're thinking about, please communicate to the mayor's office and we're happy to, happy to work on it, on anything that you guys direct us to.
Wonderful, thank you. And this was a question on the housing stuff. I know, working in the Capitol, there's been a lot of discussion about housing and a housing package happening recently. And I know, I don't believe you were the one lobbying for the apartment association, but I know that they are a former client of yours. I've had questions from other Alders given to me being like, how does conflict work if you have a conflict of interest? Can you just walk through that a little bit?
Yeah, so we always discuss any potential conflicts with our clients first. So when the City of Madison approached us, it was clear that representing both the apartment association and the City of Madison at the same time probably wouldn't work. So we had another lobbyist in our firm take the lead on that. I do not work on apartment association business anymore and we don't even talk about it. So as long as the clients are comfortable with it and we can have a wall between those clients where there's, there's not kind of cross contamination and the clients are fine with it, that's how we operate.
So in a hypothetical scenario, we could have your coworker working for one client advocating for apples and you advocating for oranges, even though you're from the same organization?
Yeah.
And that's fine?
As, as long as it's fine with our clients, it's fine with us. And, you know, you, you run into this, especially in larger firms, you can run into this occasionally. It doesn't happen often, but it happens occasionally. And as long as you have processes set in place where you don't have that overlap or you don't have, I mean, it would be really awkward for me to go in and represent the city on landlord tenant stuff and then go and represent the apartment association on the opposite side. That doesn't work. But if they're two separate lobbyists, it typically works out okay.
Got it. Thank you so much for that clarification. And then on the municipal services payment, or payment services, whatever, I, when I was reading it earlier today, it's a jump from 33% to 37%, as Sam mentioned earlier. But when I was reading it, it didn't seem like it was some sufficient, meaning if, it doesn't keep up with inflation essentially. In the next couple of years, it might go back down to 33% if that doesn't get increased, correct?
Yeah, it's, it's kind of like, I keep referring to special ed funding because I've seen that and how it works. I, I think initially when they boosted special ed funding a few years ago, they got it up to like 33%. Well, as you can imagine, the more kids that qualify for special ed, that percentage starts to drop. So, yeah, it is not adjusted for inflation or it doesn't take into account anything else, it's a number. So that's, that's good for now, but that's, it just reiterates the need to continue these conversations and continue to push to make sure that it, it doesn't fall back and hopefully it moves forward and gets even higher.
Perfect, thank you. And then kind of a minute discussion, I don't want to take too long. There's been some questions on just like leadership involvement. I have one last document from the mayor's office that I do plan on sharing after this meeting is over. That is the internal memo that Sam mentioned earlier. I just didn't want that on Legista right away, but that will be sent over right after this meeting is over, I promise. Thank you.
Alder Pritchett.
Are there ti, are there times or instances when personal, I'm talking about personnel within the Welsh group, when your opinions, your beliefs or your priorities, you know, conflict with city priorities? And does that in any way have a bearing on how forceful you are in advancing city priorities?
It's a great question. When I left the legislature and decided to begin lobbying, I can have my own personal beliefs, but that stays at home. My work is completely different. So you guys hire me to, to do a job and I am going to do that. It's, it's kind of like a, I don't want to put myself in the same category necessarily as defense attorneys, but, you know, defense attorneys have a job to do regardless of who their client is. We have the same job to do as lobbyists. You know, thankfully, having come from local government, you know, initially I was a, on the town board, then I was on the county board, I understand your issues and I can easily advocate for them because I believe in them. But to say that we don't have clients occasionally that come up with ideas that were like, eh, it's probably not the best idea, that's not my job. It's not my job to determine whether somebody's right or wrong on an issue or it's my job to, to try to help them get what they want in a way that is the most effective. And sometimes that is, you know, talking to clients about, I know you guys want this, that's going to be, if you want this, that's going to be really difficult or time consuming, but we might be able to accomplish it a different way. I see that more as my role, but deciding what's best for the city, that's, that's your guys' role and then I take that information and walk into the Capitol with it.
How do you, how do you still that?
How do I what?
How, how do you still, you know, one's personal, personal, deep held, personal beliefs? And, and try and pit that against something that you feel is wrong?
Yeah, I, well, to be honest with you, if, if I had a deeply held conviction and it was antithetical to everything I believed in and I had a client approach me or a potential client approach me and want me to work on it, I have the option at that point of whether I take that client or not. And if it's something that I don't feel like I can make a case for and be believable, I'm not going to take that client.
Okay, because that, that leads into, you know, and it's like a personal recusal of oneself. You know, if you know that your beliefs run counter to what the city wants, when do you really say to yourself, I can't do that? And I'm not going to string the city along, knowing that this is a personal, deep held belief that I have? Now, you're still getting paid.
Yep, yeah, I.
So that's, that's critical.
Yeah, and I will say, I've, I've been lobbying since 2022, I haven't run into that yet. If I did run into a situation where somebody asked me to do something that I just couldn't make an argument for or be believable, the first thing I would do is tell the client that and let them make a decision on whether they wanted me to continue to work with me or not.
Thank you.
Sure. Great, thank you. Aldo Harrington-McKinney. And please keep in mind that we're trying to keep questions to the actual legislative agenda. Thanks.
I think she's on mute.
I, I appreciate your response to Aldo Pritchett. Your response was right on target in terms of being able to sell, work for the client and also being able to keep, keep your own personal beliefs in check. And your answer was exactly what I wanted to hear and I have a tremendous amount of respect for your response. I just wanted to make sure that I put that into the air. Thank you, I'm complete.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I have no other Alders in the queue. This was a discussion item. So thank you, thank you so much for being here and giving us this update. We are going to move on to the next item in our agenda and certainly if folks have additional questions, please, probably easiest to reach out to Sam.
Sounds good. Thank you, everybody. Good to see you.
All right, we're moving on to item three, Legista 88464, adopting the 2026 Common Council meeting dates. They are in your packet. May I have a motion? Thank you. John G. Any discussion? Seeing none, is there any objection to record a unanimous vote in favor of adopting the Common Council meeting dates for 2026? Seeing none, those dates are adopted. Moving on to item four, 88854, Common Council Office Budget Request. I believe that we have a presentation that is going to be brief.
In the interest of time, I think what I'll do, since it was attached to the agenda and that means hopefully you've had a chance to review it, I just want to highlight a couple of things that will be of interest potentially. Every agency has been asked to take 0.75% base budget reduction, so that is the proposal that I'm submitting as well. And we should be able to absorb it this year. As we keep moving and we keep sort of shifting things, I, I want us to just remember that we may not be able to absorb these things without reducing services forever. Okay, the big thing, and again, I'm not asking for any additional money in this, in this budget, but what I am doing is trying to make a little more use of some of the money that we've been under utilizing in, in order to gain, to, you know, expand staff capacity without having to really expand our budget. So this request reallocates funds from the Aldo intern matching program, that's the $5,000, reallocates that to the hourly so that we can hire fall and spring and/or spring interns to provide the council with additional staff assistance, at least for part of the year, if not even longer, because that's, that's at the aspire rate. So it's a, it's a, it's a paid internship, because I know one of the sticking points that folks were, were telling me about was that they weren't utilizing their 250 because it just wasn't appealing enough for folks to go through the work and, you know, all the paperwork and, and so that for, you know, for an unpaid intern. Now, that, in order to, to make sure it's at the aspire rate, I have to take money from another pot of money that gets underutilized, which is the Aldo Conflict Mediation Funds. So I'm taking 1,547 from that and moving it over. Now, I just want to make sure you all understand, this doesn't change this year. Y'all can do whatever with your 250 this year that you were planning to do, you're all good to go. And it also doesn't change that if, if someone on the council wants to use their 1,900 or a portion of their 1,900 expense account or ask others for a portion of their 1,900s and, and use it, you are free to do so. We're not saying that. We're just using, we're just taking the 500 and reallocating it centrally so that we'll go through the hiring process and manage the interns and so that we'll have more consistent intern work. So that, just want to be clear on that, that it doesn't, it doesn't stop anyone from doing anything this year that they've already got planned and, and it doesn't, you know, eliminate the program, just the, the funding pot of extra money. The small business fam tour, as folks have been able to experience, it's quite popular. So we split that with the, or we share that with the Economic Development Division. So I wanted to make sure I, I signaled in here that we're going to dedicate or prioritize $500 for that project. We do like to provide promotional items, small promotional items when we're walking, when we're working tables and events. And so we've done it before through the Office Supply Budget, but I wanted to just signal that as well. Both the $500 for the fam tour and the $600 for swag would also come out of the conflict mediation, Aldo Conflict Mediation Funds, we still have money in there. And then I, I just flagged, briefly, I just wanted to flag this concern I've got about providing some kind of additional assistance or support for city boards, commissions and committees. I'll be working with the BCC Administrative Services Team Steering Group, talking about this issue and, and we'll see what we can come up with. I know there's lots of options. So that's the short, short version. And I would like, if anybody has any feedback, because what I'm looking for is a motion and then I'll submit and I think it's due on the 18th. Thank you very much in advance.
Any questions for Karen? All right, seeing none, may I have a motion? And any objection to recording a unanimous vote in favor? Seeing none, that is voted for. Okay, and now we will move on to item five, and the recommendation of the lead sponsor is to re-refer to Common Council Executive Committee on the 5th and then Common Council also on the 5th of August. Second, is there a second? Is there any objection to recording a unanimous vote in favor of the re-referral? Seeing none, that item is re-referred. All right, we are moving on to item six, which is a discussion. So I just wanted to set the stage here a little bit. So obviously last November, we had a referendum and we had a lot of work leading up to the referendum to try to educate members of the public as well as members of our own body about what it was that the city does and why the referendum was a viable path forward for us to help manage our budgetary challenges. During that process, there was an initiation of staff giving reports to the Common Council. That is something that both takes time and also is perhaps not the only opportunity for Alders to engage in bigger picture items. So there's a few other models for what is done in other entities. So for example, the Plan Commission, I believe it's quarterly that they get together, twice a year, and that they don't have actual agenda items, they have an open discussion on particular topics. The County Board is meeting on specific topics as a committee of the whole prior to their actual board meetings. And then there are options for retreats and there's probably any other number of options for ways that we could address this. So the purpose of this point in the agenda is to have a conversation about what the CCEC would like to recommend to council as a path forward. And it may be what we've been doing in terms of staff reports, it may be something, model along the Plan Commission, County Board, having retreats or any other things that you might come up with. But ways that you all would like to be able to engage in kind of bigger topics that aren't so easy to do in a, in a staid Roberts Rules of Order agenda kind of space. The floor is yours. Aldo Duncan.
Thank you, Madam President. I had some conversations about this with colleagues and I think we, this came from the vote that we had trying to shorten our meetings. The presentation that was presented by Karen and Common Council staff have showed there are a lot of areas that are a lot of areas that we spend a lot of time on, and for the most part, a lot of those things, we can't remove from our agenda. There is one thing that we can move from our agenda, and that item, on average, goes anywhere between 58 minutes to two hours and 10 minutes. And so, if we are serious about having legislative conversations about what we can do as policymakers to bring ordinance changes, bring legislative changes, I think that it would be better to be able to have that in a different setting. I do know that President Vitterver, you had recommended that we have staff presentations on the Common Council meetings when there's not a CCEC meeting. And my understanding is that was not welcomed. And so, I really want to make sure that if we do presentations, which I think are important, that we're allowing an opportunity, not just for us as policymakers, but also for community leaders. There are a lot of conversations that I think that we need to be having as Alders, but I do think that we need to bring in small businesses, we need to bring in nonprofits, and we need to bring in other individuals around the city that can show us what is needed. And then we, as policymakers, can direct staff to start helping us put together that legislative piece. And so, I think the way that Plan Commission does their two meetings a year is great, because we're able to have conversations about, one topic was EV stations, and where we need to invest around the city and around the county for those, and that allowed staff to be able to start looking into it. I understand that the staff presentations in the beginning were to help Alders get up to speed, but I would really recommend my colleagues, look at the onboarding that our Common Council staff and city staff have worked hours upon weeks upon months to put together. And just in my conversations with some of my colleagues, maybe a third of us have actually looked through the entire presentations and PowerPoint presentations and videos that are out there. So, we truly are having these presentations to get us up to speed, it's already our responsibility to be looking at those onboarding materials that are out there. Another reasoning that was brought forward as to why these presentations were happening was because the business community thought we were a joke. And so, these presentations were being shown to help the business community not think we were a joke. Well, the residents elect us, so if the residents are putting people into the positions that we're in, whether the business community thinks we're a joke or not, the constituents are the ones that voted. So, if the business community do think that those individuals are a joke, maybe start getting people to run against those individuals. I really think that if we're serious about shortening our meetings, then we really need to start having conversations about having opportunities outside of the legislative meeting to have these conversations, and not bringing staff presentations into the legislative piece just to get an update of what's happening, or where we're going great from the city. And so, that's where I am at, I guess.
So, it sounds like your recommendation would be that we follow the model of the Plan Commission and have twice a year, a standing council meeting that is devoted to key issues of the day.
Yeah, that would be good, or just an open meeting, a meeting of the whole, instead of a Common Council meeting.
Awesome. Thank you. All right, Alder Govindarajan.
Thank you, Madam President. I really appreciate Alder Duncan for bringing this up. I agree with him wholeheartedly. I personally feel like with the staff presentations, I haven't learned a whole lot that I did not previously know, because two years ago, I went through the Alder onboarding things as Alder Duncan mentioned. So, other than the budget committees, I love Dave Schmidke's presentations, working on memorizing them. But I think if we are to continue staff presentations of any form, I don't personally find too much use having it at council, but if that is the way that we move forward again, I think the process in how we choose what presentations we have should be more in the hands of council. It should be our members who kind of, who choose, okay, I want to hear from MPD, I want to hear on homeless issues, I want to hear about the issues that I keep hearing about in my district, or issues that I know will be a point of contention in the upcoming budget. I think that is a discussion that happens maybe at the executive committee, and then we provide a list of recommendations of what presentations we want to hear from, and then council approves it. I think my big priority in this discussion is ensuring that council is initiating and dictating the agenda for which presentations we have coming in front of us, so it actually feels like we're, we are curious to learn, instead of just being given information. That's all, thank you.
Alder Ugher.
Thank you, Council President. I'll just briefly endorse what Alder Duncan has mentioned. I have found, as a member of the Plan Commission, that that approach that we use to do sometimes three meetings a year that are more focused on particular subjects of general interest, in which sometimes we can also invite other experts outside of staff to help inform us is very productive. Thank you.
Alder Pritchett.
You know, I know there is a great need for the spirit of collaboration. And since I've been on the council, you know, there are times when questioning goes on and on and on. And I do believe that that's, that occurs primarily because, you know, perhaps in Alder is just getting up to date on what that information is all about. So, in the interest of time, and to have a robust, you know, conversation about it, I think sometimes discussing issues, especially when we look at the 20 districts that we have, there are times when issues parallel districts, and there are times when issues will intersect with districts. Having said that, collaborating, hey, this is the same thing that's going on in District Two, or this is the same thing that's going on in District Nine, perhaps there should be, you know, opportunities for wholesome discussion about issues, whether or not they are the same, and/or whether or not they're different, different issues that a particular district is having. So, I do believe that having discussions before, the operative word is before, the council meeting is important. That way, we prevent, or we minimize, you know, the time for, you know, questions that come up or pop up like little dandelions, and we can get on with getting, get on with getting on with the city's business, instead of having to, you know, go on and on and on about something that perhaps could have been addressed in a discussion before the issue is brought before the council, or before, you know, we have to vote on an issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Alder Madison.
Thank you, Alder Vitterver. I am here to add another three to five minutes to this discussion. To start with, one thing that I think we could be better at, and this is more so, I would love for us to have only one-hour meetings, call it a day, I would absolutely love it, but I sort of bottle my frustration in any meeting that I may be running over, because I also understand we're all different kinds of learners, and how we receive and break down information can be different, you know, based on a lot of factors. So, one suggestion I just have for us, maybe at the beginning of every new term, is that there's some sort of, I don't know if it's a survey, I don't know what it is, I don't know if it's a one-on-one with Common Council office staff, or the newly-elected leadership, but it would be helpful to understand every Alder's learning style and how they best receive information, because for some people, it is, for me, I'll be transparent. I am annoyed by sitting through a presentation, but that is only because I've likely had those conversations with the staff, so I'm just, I use it as an opportunity to get caught up on, you know, constituent conversations, for example. So, it would be really helpful to understand what kind of learners we are, and then, you know, grouping that information together and making the best decision for learning opportunities, whether we're learning about city agencies, constituent engagement, our own districts. Because at my house, I have a wall dedicated to Aldering stuff, in a very nerdy way, so I'm sure not everybody learns and does that at home. But that's my two cents. I would enjoy shorter meetings, but I also think we need to be mindful that we're all a different kind of learners, and do our due diligence to understand what kind of learners are on council each year, so. That's my two cents. Was that three minutes or five?
Fewer, I think. Thank you, Alder Madison.
I can add more.
And I'm just picturing you with one of those, like, crime boards on your wall, so I hope that's not what you have, but.
Sort of. It does look like that, because you all have a space.
Thank you, I'll be quick. I think one other thing I want to implore this council to think about, it's not only do we maybe want shorter meetings, but I think all of us truly want more efficient meetings, where everything is useful, and we are learning information. I think when we say that we want shorter meetings, that is not what we're really trying to get at, and when, like, for the six constituents watching us right now, that's not the message that I want to get across either. We're trying to be more efficient and have us learn and be more informed, I suppose. So, that's just like the correction I want to make, I suppose.
It may take someone 30 minutes to get that information. I just, I understand what you're saying. Again, I understand efficiency and shortening time, but I just want to reiterate, we are all frustrated with each other at different times. We're frustrated with how long I am talking about this, I'm confident, but what I just want to reiterate, it would be really useful to understand what kind of learners we are at the beginning, and to take that into consideration for how we present information to each of us throughout that term or terms.
All right, Alder Matthews.
Okay, so I just wanted to mention that if we do have presentations in, like, a different format, which seems like it could definitely make sense, would it be possible to still include those presentations, like, links to them in the agenda, or somewhere where the public would be able to see? Because again, there probably aren't a lot of people watching the meetings, and probably not many of them that are, want to watch these presentations either, but I did appreciate that when I was not on council. That doesn't mean that they, we should all sit through them when we don't need to be, but to, like, you know, cue to the public what we're learning about, and how they could also learn about it, could be something people would appreciate.
Thank you. Alder Pritchett, is your hand up from before, or did you have another comment? Okay, thank you. Just checking. All right, other comments or ideas? So, what I think we'd like to do is try to sort of do a summary of the discussion today, and then present that to council with a recommendation. Does that feel like the right path? I'm seeing nods. No? Are you nodding no? Karen has thoughts. So, I think what I want to be able to say is that we'll get back to you, and we'll get back to council with some recommended options. Go ahead, Karen.
And I would like, I mean, if people have additional feedback for me or want to have conversations, like, I'd like that. And also, I want a little clarity, does this mean we're not, we're gonna, they're on pause until, like, the main ones are still on pause, until or unless you decide to unpause them?
Right, so the idea is to take sort of the conversation that we had here, distill it, and to try to present then a recommendation, or perhaps a prioritized recommendation to council, to be able to say, you know, here's a potential path forward, and then vote on what it is that we want to do going forward.
Okay.
That's what is in my head, and if anybody else has other things to add, I please invite you to. Cool. All right, so again, that was a discussion item, and now my computer went to sleep. But I believe that the next item on the council was the Council Office update, and Karen, you wanted to tell people to read it?
Yeah, at this point, I think in the interest of time and for IT's sake, I sent it out to everyone on email. There's a good amount of information in it this time. I also forgot to put in there that our legislative process liaison sent you a newsletter. She puts a lot of work into those monthly newsletters, so please keep your, you know, keep watching your inbox and make sure that you peruse that. And yeah, read my update. Thank you all very much.
You're welcome. And then the future agenda items are listed there. If you have additional items that you'd like added to the future items list, please let Karen know, and she will add those to the future agenda items list. That will be a running list. As things are taken up, they will be taken off the future agenda items list, but that will be a running list as requests from CCEC. I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Any objection to recording a unanimous vote in favor of adjournment? Seeing none, the CCEC stands adjourned.